Our usual reminder, council, if you have a conflict of interest, please let everyone else know before you vote. Can I get a motion to approve an amended agenda? We'll be adding a new business item M. The motion for that will be a travel request for Officer Ken Ayers to pick up a 2022 Dodge Durango police vehicle purchased from Kansas Highway Patrol.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda, which is including a new item M under new business, travel training request for Ken Ayers to retrieve a newly purchased police vehicle, date from the Kansas Highway Patrol, dates to be determined, 9/6 to 9/8, 2024.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the August 19th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 19, 2024 council meeting.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $234,227.56.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
Make a motion to approve the current claims for $170,941.92.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On our last claim, can I get a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims?
Make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims of $7,043.94.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Bring us to communications from the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the council tonight? Frank? Come on down. Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Frank Burkle, 905 South Sixth Street, Hot Springs, South Dakota, 57747. I wanted to talk to the city council briefly about the Fall River and thank them and the AmeriCorps volunteers for the cleanup. I think it's looking good. I wanted to make a couple of observations based on the August 22nd paper. Mayor Bob expressed his desire to tackle the cattails. I think that might have been a quote. And later said you were surprised at how fast they grew back when they did the reclamation work a few years ago. For me, I was not surprised how they came back. And none of us should be surprised when they're like three or four foot tall in about a month, right? Cattails are native species. They're grass that spreads primarily through the root system. Their roots seek to find an anchor, which is the bedrock underneath the muck. They survive, they do this because they need to survive a variety of attacks, like mammoths digging them up or bison running them over, floods, fires, you name it, right? So we might ask, what is the natural state of the creek? So I have a pictorial record of a flood of June 20th, 1947, which Stephen's studio had, I found these in my house, in the house over there when we tore it down, but there's only four of them, Misty, so you can tear them in half or whatever.
I'd love to look at them.
But, so the, the natural state of that river is a flood every 20 years that comes through and completely wipes every bit of silt, mud out of there. But that flood in particular was so strong that it floated a 20 by 30 piece of the retaining wall from in-town clear down to the falls down by Maverick, right? So if you've ever been next to the road down by Maverick, there's this huge giant piece of concrete down there that's from that flood. So when that flood would get done, there would be no silt, nothing left in that except bedrock. And then the cattails would come back, right? Because they're in the bedrock. So cattails are like buffalo grass, be another great example. What happens if you rip the buffalo grass out? You're going to get weeds. Literally, you're not, what is, what is the purpose of buffalo grass? It keeps weeds out. That's the greatest thing about it, just like cattails. So we got that area next to the American Legion with that, with that invasive grass species in there. And the reason why it's taking over the cattails is it's more aggressive. So I don't know how to solve the problem, but ripping out cattails and giving opportunity for another type of plant to take their place is what we're doing currently. I like the idea of mowing cattails, cutting them down. You know, like where the, where the balloon sat, you can have a nice flat area, but that can be done with a lawn mower. Let's see, so I guess I'm kind of wondering what, if there's any estimate of what kind of cost there would be if we did, if we supplied the manpower that like AmeriCorps did? Is there any idea how much that is?
The actual cost to the AmeriCorps folks themselves, no, because that was all volunteer.
But if we had, how many people were there? Fifteen people?
Eight.
Eight people, eight hours a day for how many days? That's a number, right? So I'm just saying, there is a cost involved to do this. In that article from a couple of weeks ago, you indicated a desire to handle this, and my suggestion would be to go back to burning it, like they used to do for all of our childhood, Bob. One of the, I think, arguments against that when we, when it kind of got, when this was hashed out a few years ago was, you know, destruction of habitat. Well, if you take a weed whacker down and you whack it all off flat to the ground, I'd call that destruction of habitat as well. So I don't know whether one's or the other, and the other one was fire. People not liking the smoke. So we can, I don't know how they exist through the summer in Hot Springs because we've had smoke every day all summer long. I'm allergic to smoke, so I sympathize with them, but having a little extra smoke for a couple of days to take care of that problem, I think would be worth it. And then the last point would be is that, I don't know how many tons of material you took out of there, but fire consumes the materials, so you don't have to pick it up out of the creek. So, anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Any questions for Frank? Do you want these back, Frank?
No.
Alright. Anyone else? Frank, if you could find some time in the future, if our schedules, you know, have some common time, I'd like to sit down and talk with you in more detail.
Well, I was planning on going to the committee tomorrow at 2:00, Public Works. Is there a committee meeting tomorrow?
No.
No.
There's Parks and Rec tomorrow.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, yeah.
Parks and Rec tomorrow at 2:00.
Tomorrow at 2:00. But I'd like to sit down with the board.
Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Can I make a comment towards that?
Sure.
Or not? The premise of what we've done is to create the ability for the public to have access to the river for recreation and whatnot. And I also understand the other argument for the habitat, for the naturalness of it. And my argument to that, that whole thing is that it's a multi-use thing. It's a flood channel, number one. As your pictures depict, that's what it was for. But we have the natural habitat just north of Minnacata on north, and then from the Dip Bridge on south. And we have no indicate, no plans to be messing with those habitats. But to make it a multi-use thing that really enhances the city and creates the ability for recreation for families. And I was walking my dog this weekend, and we had whole, I noticed whole families all along the river that were taking real joy in what has been done and the access that they were allowed. And, and it is going to grow back. It's not going to look like the stripped, denuded thing that it is right now. But we do want to, you know, it's soaking hot springs. We're all about the water. And I think, you know, once we get a hold of, of trying to control this, we spent some money last year on four sickle-type weed eaters that are used for underwater, and that's what they used to do this job. And they worked really well, I understand. So, you know, it's a multi-use thing, and we still have the habitat. It's just spread out a little bit further away. It's not in the middle of town, and there will be, there are animals and turtles, and they are there. And so I just think it's, it's a work in progress, so.
Were you in support of the burning or not? I was trying to catch.
The burning?
Yes.
It was a question, you know, I've seen it burnt over my lifetime, and that didn't seem to control them. I just, I, I think they just got bigger there, too, so.
It seemed to make them angry. It seemed to make them angry.
Yeah, it did. There's just maybe some more research into, you know, how it can be done better. But, you know, I give big kudos to AmeriCorps. They did a huge, huge service to our river and to the community in unmasking the river. And when the balloon festival two weekends ago was just a really neat tickler to what can happen there as far as civic activities and bringing things into the center of town and with the suspended sidewalk. It was just, I thought that was a glorious teaser of what will be to come when this whole project's done.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to read something here if it's, if it's acceptable. Cattails grow vigorously, and the resulting biomass can eventually block out the growth of more desirable and less invasive plant species, which you're referring to. Cattail growth can be, can obstruct criminal elements, critical elements, not criminal, critical elements of a pond. These include drain structures, emergency spillways, auto fills, and irrigation intakes. Blocking of drain structures and spillways increased the risk of flooding. In fact, many municipalities require that communities eliminate any cattails growing above, on, or below spillways. And since this is a flood channel, that this is the main purpose behind this is to get rid of, stay on top of the cattails. You brought this to my attention, Tracy, when I was talking to you about it one day and said that, yes, Coldbrook has a flood thing going on up there. I understand that, but a lot of the tributaries that come from on top of it comes down in there, so it contributes to the flooding of the channel there. So, but I didn't know that there was a 20-year thing like you were saying, Frank. Thank you. That's all I got.
Counsel, anyone else?
It's on. You just need to go right closer.
Little closer.
Rebecca Smith, 317 South River Street.
So I, if you'd pardon me, Rebecca, I forgot to remind Frank that each public speaker has five minutes.
My comments regarding the river, I do live on the river, and I do appreciate the need to manage the cattails so they don't soak out the river. It would be nice if there were some sort of plan to be able to have maybe staggered areas of cattails because they're also habitat home to many small birds, including red wing and yellow wing blackbirds, which are now absent from our part of the river between Brookside Park and the Dip Bridge. They're totally gone now, so there's no habitat of. But my comments today, I want to focus on, I understand the discussions about the cattails, but why were 18 trees taken out of the bank on the Garden Street side? It's a very steep bank held together with silver rock and what vegetation was there. I witnessed and have documented 18 different trees that were either cut down or ripped off or literally pulled out by the roots where they were down near the river. Now there's huge divots of mud that could not be good for erosion on that riverbank. So I just had that question I wanted to bring to y'all's attention. It's not just the cattails that were being ripped out, it was also trees. Thank you.
So Rebecca, if you could give us a few minutes? Counsel, do you have any questions from Rebecca's comment? So I don't have an immediate answer of why the trees were removed. I'll chat with our city administrator about that and see if we can get you an answer. Can you tell me where they were removed? Were they removed up high on the bank? Were they down in the riprap?
All over.
Okay.
They were, it seemed to be the trees that were left, there's only 12 remaining on that side of the bank, were approximately that big around or bigger. So anything smaller than about that big around was cut down or ripped out. And I have pictures on my phone that were documented, at least 18 of them were taken out.
Okay. So we'll talk with the city administrator and get a clear understanding of his thinking. Because they were in the riprap or right at the, the bank, my first thought is that the Corps of Engineers, when they do their yearly inspections, they require that vegetation within the riprap and right on the, the bank be removed. That's considered, you know, obstructions if there is a flood. Again, if they were down in the riprap, I suspect that's the reason they were taken out. And again, right on the edge, also, we've had this conversation related to Centennial Park also, you know, how close should those trees be right to the bank? And we've kept them there, but I just wanted to let you know that if it's down in the riprap, that may be the reason that was decided to be taken out. The Corps inspects us on that, and they expect the vegetation to be removed from that area. But if you could share a phone number with Misty, or if you just want to give one to City Hall rather than let us know in public what your phone number is, I'll ask the question and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Get back. It's interesting that the Corps points out that the city of Hot Springs owns the flood channel, but they tell us what we can and can't do with it. Alright, so that brings us to council updates. Public Works Engineer Tracy, would you give us your monthly update on the road project, the water and sewer?
It takes a couple of seconds to warm up, too.
Carl's coming down. Go ahead and use your church singing voice and get us started.
Okay, well, August was a month with quite a bit of progress.
Public, can you hear Tracy, or does he need to speak up a little for you?
Here he comes.
Let me see, speak up over here. Okay. Need to make, um, August was a month with quite a bit of progress on the water project. Utilities part of it is almost complete, so we'll grab a piece about that, and that's all about, well.
Would he put the empty chair?
Yeah, he could have. Well, that's.
Well, small now, but not very much is left. The tunnel water main work, all the sanitary sewer leak has been completed in this project. They're doing some storm sewer work this week.
Test 1, 2.
Have it on now? That sounds better. Okay. Alright. Some storm sewer work is being done this week, and then the tail end of the water main work on Battle Mountain, tying in up at the intersection with Somerville, will be taking place. And that indeed is the end of the utilities part of this project. At the weekly meeting this morning, they gave a somewhat of a timeline that they'll probably start doing some of the paving on Battle Mountain Avenue within the next 10 days to two weeks. So you'll probably be seeing that. The intersection at North River Street and Battle Mountain that is currently closed will reopen on Monday. That is their scheduled reopening. So that will be back to a more normal arrangement. However, the Coldbrook Avenue intersection will then be closed for about two weeks as they do the surfacing in that area. So by the end of September, any of those intersection interruptions should be, should be over. And we are definitely on the final stretch of the project. Suspended sidewalk is moving along. There's, I think, a few supply delays still going on with that, so.
Is that going to be saved by now?
Uh, it's still going. It's just still, still moving forward. They were, they're working on it some, and it seems like every so often we see a new tower show up, so it is coming along. But that's really pretty much where the project is at. It's very near completion, and it's been a, definitely a challenging project, but things are coming along nicely. I know probably one question people may have is when will the additional street lighting go up? And we have not had a recent update on that, so I do not have anything to give a timeline on the street lighting. So I guess any questions at this point?
Yeah, Tracy, right there by the gas station, when you go into the plunge parking lot, did they take that away now? Is that going to be turned into a sidewalk, or are they going to open back up the driveway going in there?
The gas station will ultimately still have, you know, two, two approaches. However, that, that approach or that inlet to the plunge parking lot that is so close to the intersection, it's our understanding DOT is taking that away. They do not like to have a driveway inlet or a, some type of a approach that close to an intersection. Is that the one you were thinking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it looks like the one, you go in on the west side of the gas station, then they have another one they've opened up through there also. There's going to be a lot of traffic going through the gas station for non-related gas, if that's true.
I think once it's all done, you won't be able to go through the gas station to get to the plunge.
Oh.
I'm pretty sure that's, I don't think they intend to leave it that way.
Okay. I was just kind of curious.
Yeah.
Tracy, do you know how current complete is on the billing for the water lines? Have we paid for everything on North River yet?
Not quite, because we would still have some billing for water on Battle Mountain.
But everything on North River from?
Oh, North River, uh, yes. I'm pretty sure they've billed us for everything with North River, because they, they were done with that water main, uh, six weeks ago now, maybe? So we have had a couple of billings since then. So the, the North River Street part of it should be done.
And then everything we're paying for water is just coming out of the water fund? Is that correct?
Yes.
This is to update that, my famous spreadsheet.
Okay. We'll be glad, we'll be very happy when it's finished.
We still have to fix or finalize Jennings and River Street intersection?
Yes, they plan to do that probably in a couple of weeks. They have purposely left that for a later time. They didn't want to try to work on that during the peak of the summer travel, traffic. But probably sometime within September. That's been what they have said all along, which it's now September, so we'll see.
Maybe I wasn't paying attention. I apologize if I wasn't. The water going up that road to those houses and that Mammoth Springs additions on that side of town, there's, there's not going to be any water cut off, right?
Oh, Mammoth Springs? You mean towards Minnacata?
All up that direction, on that side of town?
No, shouldn't be.
Okay. Just, just asking.
Okay.
Tracy, is there 100% retainage on the construction contracts?
Uh, I'd have to look at those invoices. I think there is. Five or 10. There is some retainage. Yeah, that's standard. Any other questions? Or other city projects?
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Onto personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through L?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through L.
Second.
Take JR, please.
Yeah, let him have it.
Discussion? The first personnel action, I'd like to bring your attention, Carrie Mullock. If you approve these personnel actions, the city will have a new Evans Plunge Facility Director effective tomorrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our ordinance for the evening. Can I get a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1260?
Make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 1260, 2025 appropriation ordinance.
Second.
Discussion? For the public, this is the 2025 budget that council approved. And once again, I'd like to thank you. That was very spirited discussions this year. There were a lot of difficult cuts, a lot of difficult decisions to be made, but council, you stepped up and did the best you could to get us in the best position we could be in, so thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other questions? Comments? Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Travis Borback?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Linda Barbell?
Yes.
Jerry Telltum?
Yes.
Debra Johnston?
Yes.
Howland Bell?
Yes.
The motion passes. Onto our resolutions for the evening. Can I get a resolution to approve, Resolution A 2024-15, a resolution to surplus city property?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-15, a resolution to surplus city property auction.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this an online auction, or where's this auction? And when? Do you have a date time?
You did. You approved decree number 14. It is an online auction. It'll happen in the last week of September, starting on a Thursday, I believe. I believe it starts Thursday, November 26, and then goes through October 1st with the pickup of the items on October 3rd.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Our next resolution for the evening, Resolution 2024-16, a resolution declaring potential impacts of South Dakota Initiative Measure 28. Can I get a motion to approve that one?
Make a motion to approve 2024-16. Make a motion to approve 2024-16, a resolution declaring potential impacts of South Dakota IM 28.
Second. For the public's benefit, I believe we had mentioned this, we'd be talking about this a meeting ago or a couple meetings ago. Typically, we'll read proclamations, but we don't read resolutions in their entirety. I'd like to make an exception for this particular one for tonight, and we'll talk about that as we get to the end of it. So it's Resolution 2024-16, a resolution declaring potential impacts of South Dakota-initiated Measure IM 28. Whereas IM 28 was certified for the November 24th, 2024 general election ballot by the South Dakota Secretary of State. And whereas IM 28, if passed, would remove state, municipal, and tribal taxes on all items sold for human consumption except alcohol and prepared food. And whereas, human consumption is undefined in South Dakota codified law or the South Dakota Constitution. However, Black's Law Dictionary defines consumption as the act of destroying a thing by using it, the use of a thing in a way that exhausts it. And whereas, South Dakota Codified Law 34-15-17 defines tobacco products as any item made of tobacco intended for human consumption, including cigarettes, cigars, pipe tobacco, and smokeless tobacco, and vapor products as defined in 34-46-20. And whereas, South Dakota Codified Law 10-52-2 allows incorporated municipalities to impose attacks on the sale, use, storage, and consumption of items that conform in all respects to the state tax on such items up to 2%. And whereas, the Attorney General's explanation of the measure states legislative or judicial clarification would be needed if the measure passes. And whereas, the City of Hot Springs levies a 2% sales tax and collected $2,274,258.2 in the 2023 calendar year and $1,529,1529,765.51 year to date in the 2024 calendar year. And whereas, the City of Hot Springs estimates annual lost revenue of plus or minus $474,000 unless initiated Measure 28 is rejected by voters in South Dakota. And whereas, the City of Hot Springs City Council recognizes the critical role of sales tax revenue in sustaining essential municipal services and programs. And whereas, the passage of initiated Measure 28 will impact municipal operations, creating challenges delivering the city services that residents expect, including but not limited to clean water, public safety, infrastructure, maintenance improvements including roads and parks, and other community services resulting in a reduction of services and/or an increase in other fees and taxes. And whereas, the City of Hot Springs City Council recognizes that these city services play a pivotal role in maintaining the quality, functionality, safety, and vitality of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Hot Springs, that initiated Measure 28 would negatively impact the municipal operating budget in our community. What's important in this is that council is not taking a stand on whether the measure should pass or not pass. They're letting you know the potential impacts if the measure passes. Each month, council gets a letter or a magazine from the South Dakota Municipal League, and we look to them for a lot of, not only us, but all municipalities across the state, look to them for a lot of good information. They have indicated a website that people can go to and read for yourselves, the potential impacts and reasonings behind the concern about initiated Measure 28. That website is no S D income tax dot com. I would encourage everyone to go take a look at it and inform yourselves about how you want to vote on this particular initiated measure. If council approves this, it's letting you folks know that we have strong concerns and reservations about the position that the City of Hot Springs would be in if this particular measure passes. Is there anything else anybody would like to add? Did I misstate anything?
No.
Any questions from the public? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I get a motion for new business item A, confirm the intent of city council to cover the following police department reserve officers?
Make a motion to confirm the intent of the city council to cover the following police department reserve officers, unpaid volunteer for work comp purposes. John Fotopoulos, Charlotte Shively, Sidney Belt, Daniel Smith, and Duane Stanley.
Second. Discussion.
Do you want to explain this a little bit? I don't understand it very well.
In order to cover reserve officers that are volunteers under our workers' compensation, council has to acknowledge and confirm that with their names in the man's.
Okay.
Typically, we do this at the beginning of the year, but at the beginning of the year we just have one.
Okay.
So they have a reserve class graduate recently, and we're lucky enough to get to add all these officers, and we want to ensure that we have them covered under workers'.
Of course. Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business item B, waive green fees and cart rental fees for the Don Gannon Memorial Golf Tournament?
Make a motion to approve item B, waive green fees and cart rentals fees for the Don Gannon Memorial Golf Tournament to be held annually in September.
Second.
Discussion.
I think this is a good thing. The money comes right back into the golf course. Doesn't go anywhere else. It's a good thing for those who didn't know Don Gannon, and I did not, but I have been informed that he is or was one really great guy and really liked the golf course, the way it looked. Wanted to repair some golf carts or golf cart paths on his own, with his own money, and they finally got a crew together to help him out. But I think this is a good thing. It comes back into the golf course. Doesn't go anywhere else.
So let me lead off here a little bit. Thank you for that, JR. I appreciate it. I asked to have this, I put this on the agenda because I believe there's a discussion that it deserves. Understandably, there's always concern when we waive fees, how does that impact our budgets? We just talked about an initiated measure that if passed would significantly impact our budgets. So I recognize that it's important to look at every penny that we can potentially generate. JR began talking about, in my mind, what's different about this particular one. In 2014, council spent $18,866.95 to do a master plan study for the golf course. It was done by Hereford and Norby. It's quite a lengthy document. It's available to council. We can certainly get it to you if you don't have it, if you want to see it. We can do that. Summarizing the document itself, they came away with a 12-year action plan for the golf course, starting in 2015. They identified all kinds of things that they felt the course needed to have addressed. Again, 12-year action plan that on the low end would cost in 2015 dollars, would cost $2,370,790 to address all the items that they identified in that study. On the high end, $2,863,117. A large sum of money. Council, we all certainly understand when we begin talking about things, when we begin looking at budgets, it's very difficult to find any large sums of dollars to take care of a number of things. The clubhouse retaining wall out there wasn't inexpensive. We were fortunate that we had some money in savings to get that taken care of. But this particular group, the folks that JR was talking about, that had been running the Don Gannon Memorial Golf Tournament for a number of years, and I'll ask them to step up and one of them to step up and talk with you, and Jason's also here to give you his sense of why we feel this would be beneficial for the council to consider and to approve. They want to carry on their friends' love for the course and their own love for the course, and be able to generate some revenue that they can take care of some of the smaller items that may not even be on this list, but still need to be taken care of. They've been working getting some of the cart paths replaced for a number of years, and they're looking at other things. Yes, it is, on the surface, waiving a fee. It's not like it's going to go to some organization that we never see the money again. This will directly, these funds would directly come back to the golf, back to the city, back to the golf course. If there's some details that need to be worked out and how that would be managed, I think the conversation is worth having. But to say that we shouldn't do this because we would be losing revenue, I think that's a narrow-minded look. This is a way of generating some revenue and maybe earmarking it for things that would not need to be addressed during the budget sessions, because it's been taken care of with the funds that have been raised by these folks to carry on Don's vision for the golf course. With that, Dave, could you come up and inform the council what you folks have been doing?
My name's Dave Merrill. I'm with 12802 Pine Haven Road, Hot Springs, South Dakota. I am a member of the Don Gannon Golf Course Committee, also a member of the Golf Course Advisory Committee. If you look at this, we are asking for a waiver for the green fees and the cart fees for this tournament. If you will notice, what we've done in the past four years is not a small amount. Most of, everything's been done with volunteer labor. The concrete that we purchased have come from this golf tournament, roughly 119 and a half yards of concrete, and a conservative price of $170 a yard for concrete. And the people that lay concrete tell me that the labor charge on concrete is usually what a yard costs, so that's where the double amount comes into. So in the last four years, roughly, we put back in, where does it say? Someplace on there, $41,430 with labor. The rebar has been donated by a local hardware supply store, ProBuild, so that's another $800. So that's what we put into it in the last four years. If we have to pay green fees and cart rental, that's just going to take money away from us, because, you know, before, in the past, members never had to pay for green fees at a tournament. This year has been changed, and if members, majority of the people that play in this tournament are members out there, they have their own carts, so you won't make a lot off the carts. But if we have to pay the membership fee, that's $40 or $50 per person, and if we have 70 or 80 people playing this tournament, which we hope we do, that is a large amount of money that's taking away from this tournament that actually goes back to the golf course. So I don't know. I know towards the end of September, green fees are changed. I don't know when Jill is going to reduce green fees. A lot of times they'll go, you play 18 holes for the price of nine. So, you know, I don't know that figure, but I think we'll have a better turnout. I know we'll have a better turnout if we don't have to charge our membership. People are coming to play this tournament, the green fees. And bear in mind, this, all the money, all the money that we make in this tournament, other than a little bit that we pay out for places, goes back into the cart shed or cart path renovations.
So how do you make your money on the tournament? Is there a fee for participating in the tournament?
There is a fee for participating. Right now, it's for a member, it's 100, a member that's, it's $150 a team for members, and for non-members, it's $250 per team.
So that comes in to your fund, and you turn around and do this stuff?
Buy the concrete and buy the, we haven't had to buy the rebar yet. We have, we do buy the concrete, and we've had all the labor so far donated. I know Jason and his crew do a lot of the prep work. You know, we help as much as we can do, but I know Jason and his crew have done a lot. And also, right now, the, Jason is ready to pour the cart paths or sidewalk from the clubhouse down to the practice green or practice tee, and that also is coming out of the Don Gannon Memorial Funds. So I don't know what that'll take, eight or nine yards of concrete. So that's not figured in this, this just now being done.
When Dave is talking about the green fees, council, if you remember, early in the year, through the Greens Committee, we had recommended that any tournament that ended up closing the course, that folks who had a season's pass could not use that season's pass to pay in that tournament for free. We wanted to collect the revenue off them, just like anyone else. Inadvertently, this tournament got caught up in that, because a lot of the members have the season's pass. And has talked with Dave about it and thought about it myself, because the money and the labor, volunteer labor, it does come directly back to the course for it. That was the reason that I wanted to put it on the agenda, present it to you folks, and see what your thoughts are as far as waiving the fees for this one particular tournament. The other question that was raised regarding it is, is this just this year? Is it, you know, a year down, two years down the road? Is it obligating future councils to, you know, accepting this? We've all learned that each year, council can, I don't know, pass a resolution that removes a resolution that was approved before. So I do believe that a future council could take a different action if they wanted to do, wanted to, but that was the reason that I had put in here, Don Gannon Memorial Golf Tournament to be held annually in September. My intent of that language was that if it's approved this one time, that it would be something that would happen every year.
I'd be glad to answer any questions the best that I can. Some of them I might not be able to answer, but I can make something up.
For my purposes, you already did, and thank you very much, and for the, not only for the straight-up answers, but for what you do for the course.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to ask a question. It's probably not going to be a very popular question. Once I'm off council, I go back to being Joe taxpayer. And my big question, being on council, is, and you've explained, maybe helped me understand better, how is this benefiting the whole town?
How is this benefiting the whole town?
Yes, all of us, the rest of us taxpayers.
Well, for one thing, the cart paths ought to be repaired.
Let me just ask a question.
What's that? The cart paths need repaired, and I don't think there's any money in the budgets to repair them. You know, I'm not sure it's helping all the taxpayers, other than you guys setting aside funds from the taxpayers to repair stuff in the future.
Can I, can I help answer that? Larry, do you mind if I answer that?
Well, I'd like to hear what he says first, and maybe you can answer it.
Well, I'm not sure he's got the intricacies of how it does help all the taxpayers.
I don't think it, I don't think it, I don't, it can't directly affect the taxpayers of Hot Springs, other than the taxes that the people are paying.
Let me rephrase that. How's this benefiting the city?
How's this benefiting the city?
The city?
Yeah.
We're putting in thousands and thousands of dollars into the golf course cart passes the city has no money to put into that need repaired.
Okay.
That's how, I think that's how it's benefiting the city.
And this is not a derogatory question. I mean, there are people out there, they're probably watching the video tomorrow, they're going, wait a minute, what's going on here? So I'm just, you know, putting it, hopefully putting it in a different light, that's all I'm doing.
And I'd like to put a little clearer answer on that. I see the way that it benefits all of the city is each year, we budget a subsidy for the golf course and Evans Plunge if their budgeted expenses exceed their estimated revenues. Now, the last two years, and it looks like maybe this year we won't have to use that subsidy. So where that benefits the city is when those cart paths, and they have to be maintained, if we had to put that in the golf course budget, that would increase the expenses, not necessarily increase the revenue. So instead of looking at, say, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar budgeted subsidy, you might be looking at a hundred and seventy thousand dollar budgeted subsidy, which then that comes out of the 212 fund. So that is no longer funds that it's available to fix roads, make other building repairs and so on. So that is how all of the city of Hot Springs sees a benefit by doing this, is because it frees up funds that don't then have to be earmarked as a subsidy for the golf course, and we can leave them in the 212 fund for other construction projects.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We, you know, we don't, we don't have enough money in our, in our funds or our golf tournaments to redo all the cart paths. That's why we're doing the little sections, the best we can do, and we go basically off Jason Happy as a golf superintendent, his recommendations, what needs to be done. We want to get the worst ones done as soon as we can, and then continue with this tournament to keep building and keep building until eventually we maybe get them all where they don't need any repairs, if that will ever happen. And then, once the cart paths are done, there are other projects at the golf course we'd be more than happy to help out with.
Anyone else?
Well, additionally, it helps the city because it's a draw to tourism, and those people will be drawn to a well-maintained facility and golf course and spend their money all around town with the motels and restaurants and the shops. And so, I mean, the wives are shopping while the husbands are golfing and, or vice versa. Who knows? But, yeah, it's a, it does bring in money to town and brings in more taxes as well. And it has to be well-maintained to do that. So I really thank you for everything you guys have done over many years now.
To clarify, there'd be no taxes paid on the green fees or the cart rentals.
But there are taxes paid throughout town with...
When the lives go down.
Oh.
So just to clarify, you'd also be not collecting taxes on those fees that you're not packing.
So I'd, I'd just like to add that, to say that there's no money in the budget, I think that's technically true. Doesn't always have to be that way. I mean, if council, you know, took a look and said, well, we want to replace, you know, fifty thousand dollars worth of cart paths this year, they could certainly budget that, but that doesn't always rise to the top. And to have the money go into the city's coffers with the hope that that money that's generated would be redirected towards these types of things come budget time, I think council, you recognize, that's probably not going to happen most of the time. So in a sense, this is earmarking the money specifically to the golf course, identifying those things that need to be taken care of. So I think that's the benefit in doing this. And again, it's not going to an outside organization that we're never going to see the money again. It is going to come back and benefit the city. Jason, is there anything you'd like to add?
Name is Jason Happy, Golf Course Superintendent. Not really, not unless some of you guys have questions for me. I'm in full support of it. Larry, thank you for that question. I will, I'm going to work a little bit more on addressing that publicly because I think that the golf course is a huge asset to this community. We kind of serve three functions: a recreational opportunity for the locals, recreational opportunity for tourists, as well as housing development. So assets, we're like a little mini-city, similar things that Tracy has to deal with, water, our car paths are kind of our roads. Same thing with the street projects. They, you know, after so many years, they deteriorate, it's rough, we start getting complaints, so we have to dump assets back into it. This is a great way, comes all the way back to the course. If this was any, we have a lot of great tournaments, a lot of the other tournaments, they don't, aren't functioned like that, so I wouldn't necessarily be endorsing this style for every tournament, but because this money stays with the golf course, this is a great way that we could use that and help prove some of the assets that the city does have out there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jason. Anyone else? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Tewett, call the roll, please.
Mary Tough, Cam.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Hal Landel.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Bill Lukin.
Yes.
Travis Orbach.
Yes.
Linda Barbell.
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, council.
Good luck with your tournament. I heard your work.
Can I get a motion to approve new business item C, reimburse Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-one cents for the cost of installing the irrigation system in the Welcome Island?
I would like to approve to reimburse Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-one cents for the cost of installing the irrigation system in the Welcome Island adjacent to South Sixth Street and Highway 385, to be paid by future supplemental appropriation from the general fund and assigned fund balance to the Parks Department, other current expense budget, one zero one dash four five two zero zero dash four two nine zero zero.
Second.
So council, we've spoken individually on this particular item, and your feeling was that you wanted it brought back in front of you for discussion. This has to do with the Welcome Island cross from Linds Dakota mark that Keep Hot Springs Beautiful has stepped up and said that they would take care of for us. Once it became aware, once the city became aware that that space was going to be available to us, we started having conversations within Public Works of how we were going to address that island. It was originally referred to as Welcome Park. We quickly moved away from Welcome Park. We didn't want it to become part of our parks system, so we addressed it as, we renamed it Welcome Island, Welcome. And as we talked about in August, on August 15th, 2022, there was an original memorandum of agreement, understanding that the city of Hot Springs would install and maintain an irrigation system in that island, as well as the electricity and the water. So the water was installed as the road reconstruction project came past that island to begin with. And then, I believe, early 2024, council paid ninety-six hundred dollars to put electricity into that island. We just lost track of the irrigation going in that island. Keep Hot Springs Beautiful then had a conversation with our city engineer about installing it as a private contractor, private irrigation contractor. And when it, when the bill was presented to Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, that started the conversation about, well, oops, thought the city was going to take care of this. Again, speaking with you, the intent of council at the time was that the city would take care of it, and you wanted brought, wanted this brought back in front of you to reimburse Keep Hot Springs Beautiful for the cost of that irrigation system. And that's the seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. So that's why it's back in front of you. Is there anyone from Keep Hot Springs Beautiful that would like to add anything? Well, Caitlin's coming up. I'd like to acknowledge the great work that all the volunteers have been doing with our bump outs. And for the public and for council, you can see the projects that they've been involved with, and they also gave us a planning diagram for their vision for that Welcome Island.
Caitlin Mossit, I am Secretary of Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. I think, I don't have a lot of points to add. I guess I can answer any questions. We plan, if everything, I guess, goes as planned, we plan to plant twenty trees in that median by the end of the month. They're on hold with the wholesaler right now, and they can be delivered in the next couple of weeks, and we have volunteers that are, I guess, waiting for the go. And so, that would be, I guess, our plan for what we want to do there this fall. So, is there any questions regarding it?
Yeah, last month, you sent me an email, what's been accomplished so far. You plan on bringing that to the meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Appreciate it.
I know, I mean, I can give, I know I gave Bob a rundown, or Shelley sent one of what we've done this year, but I mean, there's, twenty of the bump outs have been replanted. We have a couple that we're still waiting for them to get released from the states. I think the Flatiron got released last week. We're waiting on Chinawak and a few others. We have about six, a little over sixty volunteers that have worked this year. I'm still collecting hours for August, but we're over nine hundred hours for just replanting. That's not our other events. There's been over a thousand plants that have gone back in. And it just, it's been, it's been a project, but it's fun to drive through now and see everything blooming and starting to fill in, and so it's definitely been worth the blisters and the sunburn and the hard work.
It's absolutely beautiful.
And while we're sitting here talking about this, I'd like to bring attention, if it's not off base, one of the questions that was posed was putting signs in those bump outs that y'all had put all the screen down in it. What was your thought on that?
I mean, we talked about it in parks a little bit, and anytime there's a hole that gets poked in the, not all of the corners have the landscape fabric in it, we gave the volunteers the choice. But it does, you know, it just provides an opportunity for weeds to come up. It seems like people have been better lately. I've been, there's still some coming up, but I've seen more people that are putting like A-frames on the sidewalk. But, yeah, I mean, anytime, and especially if they get poked different places every week, eventually stuff will work its way through there that volunteers need to pull out.
And I just wanted to bring it up on the information that you gave council here, because that's, to me, that's important. Thank you.
I have two things. Number one question is, is there supposed to be a big clock that goes in there as well? I just see the trees.
Yeah, I, that, the picture you have is our, like, the most recent rendering, the one we did a couple years ago only had nine trees on it because that's what we thought there was room for. But now that it's done, and we went and we, with our hundred-foot tape, and we made sure everything was back from sightlines, and we figured out what there was room for, I'm not sure what the plan is in regards to the clock. That was always kind of on the city side of it, I thought, as to, I guess, where, we talked about, I know, at one point, we talked about putting it on the skinny side, back towards like where the point is. I think we've talked about putting it closer to the stop sign. I'm not, we don't have like a plan right now, I think.
You're not tied to the clock?
Well, I think we've been talking about it with the city administrator. I'm not sure what the current plan is. It's not in this schematic because I don't think there was a final decision on where it was going.
Yeah, I've talked to Bob.
That's why we had the electricity put over there and stuff.
Yeah, irrigation isn't, I don't think electric, electricity isn't, I think it's across the street, is that?
We have electricity.
You brought it to the island?
Yeah, it's to the island. I think it's down by the stop sign is where, but it hasn't been run.
Okay.
I think that the sprinkler system is running off a couple temporary solutions right now to get it through until that.
Yeah, Bob Junior and I talked about that, but you probably want to talk to him, he'll get better information on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's still, I know that it's been painted, it's just where it ends up. Wherever it ends up, we'll do, we'll probably do some plantings or something around it just to beautify the area directly around the clock.
Okay. And then, my comment towards the motion that's in place is that this is city infrastructure. It should not be up to Keep Hot Springs Beautiful to pay for that. I mean, as you can see, for what they've done already, what they've done over time, they've more than paid their dues, and they shouldn't have to pay for infrastructure as well.
Any other questions? So to the clock, Deborah, yes, it's the city's desire to reuse the clock that came out of the West Oak Building. And as has been mentioned, that's a conversation that I believe Bob was having with someone, I'm not sure who, but identifying where the clock needed to go, or was going to go.
Yeah, I think initially, I mean, I think in the drawings from like 2022, we had it on that skinny side, but we talked about having it be on the, closer to Linds to reduce the cost of having to move the electricity through the full length of the bump out, or the median. And I don't think we, Keep Hot Springs Beautiful doesn't, we don't have a position on where it should be in the median, we don't have a preference. So wherever it makes the most sense for the city, we will, we'll work it into the plan.
Okay.
Well, I was thinking, of the trees that you have there, once they mature, are they going to be blocking the clock?
That would be the thing. If it's on the, if it ends, if it's on the skinnier side, towards the point, or back towards those heating and cooling, it would potentially. So then, we'd need to make sure that there was a bigger gap there between trees, or figure out that, we make sure that there's, it's still going to be visible in ten and twenty years. It's not going to be obscured.
Right.
And I think one of the reasons to put it in the bigger area too is just to make sure it was safe, not get hit by a car or something.
One other question that was put to me, Caitlin, and you had mentioned that this design has changed a little from the first one that you folks presented to DOT for their approval. This one still meets all DOT's concerns as far as sightlines and safety and all of that, and that's, question's more for the public than...
Yeah, I resubmitted it last week after, once the sprinkler system was in and we knew where the trenches were, and so we made sure trees aren't going to, roots aren't going to impede anywhere, and we, we remarked where all the desired planting locations were. And once we, I talked to the tree supplier and confirmed the tree quant, or the tree varieties, I sent the diagram with the desired tree varieties and types and their locations to DOT, and they said it was fine.
Okay. Thank you. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for, well, new business item D, it's discussion only. Acknowledge the previously approved FAA grant agreement, the design and construction extension to the Farthest West Wing Taxi Lane, three hundred and eighty-three feet by twenty-five feet, BIL AIG three dash four six dash zero zero two zero dash zero one six dash two zero two four, has been renumbered by the FAA two three dash four six dash zero zero two zero dash zero one eight dash two zero two four. The amounts and purpose of the grant remain unchanged. So this is an acknowledgement that the grant number has changed, nothing else has changed as far as the previous approval that council gave. Am I saying that correctly, Misty?
Absolutely.
All right. Is there anything, Misty or Bill, would like to add?
The reason you're acknowledging it is because you do have to acknowledge the grant acceptance, acceptance, and you did, you just did it with the sixteen number, and then they changed it to eighteen. So in order to stay compliant with the grant, we just want to make sure that you know that nothing else about it changed, just that number.
We're keeping up with federal paperwork.
There's a lot of it.
Just a small piece of it. We like their grant.
All right, on to new business item E. Can I get a motion to authorize finance officer to transfer cash in the amount of $1 million from the general fund, unassigned fund balance?
I make a motion to authorize finance officer to transfer cash in the amount of $1 million from the general fund, unassigned fund balance 101-26700 and $590,000 from the additional sales tax fund capital replacement balance 212-26520 to the Hot Springs Capital Improvement Fund 501-26425 to cover the expenses related to the contracted suspended sidewalk construction project.
Second.
Second.
All right, Misty, can you give us a little narrative on this one?
So you approved this transfer previously, and then we will practically bid for, and were approved DOT loan to help cover the overages and the expenses with the project. During our budget discussion and reviewing our current financial situation, it was very clear that we can't support, especially by 28 passes, an additional $200,000 annual loan payment. It was a good loan offer from the DOT, so we transferred the money back. And our plan was to take that, but in light of the recent information that they just shared, it makes more sense to not take out that loan and saddle a future council with a payment that we don't even know how we'd make, and just pay for it now, which is gonna hurt. It's gonna take cuts, keep me up at night, whatever, financially. But paying for it now makes the most sense, because I'm not sure how future councils would make that payment.
Thank you, Misty.
You're welcome.
So we've talked about, over the years, about the overage. The original agreement when the suspended sidewalk was approved by council was that the state of South Dakota would transfer $2.8 million to the City of Hot Springs for the construction of the suspended sidewalk, in exchange for us taking responsibility of University Avenue as far as maintenance, with the exception of the two bridges on University Avenue. The state is still responsible for the maintenance, repair, replacement, whatever it may be of those two bridges. That original $2.8 million was going to cover the construction and the design cost of the suspended sidewalk. The design cost was about $400 million. Construction was $2.4 million. So the 2.8 million that the governor had agreed to transfer, to give the city in exchange for the University Avenue, was going to cover our cost. And then COVID hit, and the world went nuts. And when the project was actually bid with the state of South Dakota, that suspended sidewalk, the city's portion went up by right around $900,000. Then there were some additional costs with the additional 1,900 feet of water man. There were extra costs that the city was incurring. And as Misty said, the state was very good in working with us to give us a loan to cover those costs. So that was the direction we thought we were going to go. And as Misty explained, the world changed again on us, or it looks like it might change. So the better, we feel the better decision is just go ahead and pay for it, rather than hamstring future councils for 10 years with what the cost might be. That's the reasons in front of you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On to new business item F. Can I get a motion to recognize and record the names of the three suppliers and their quotes?
I make a motion to recognize and record the names of the three suppliers and their quotes received for the purchase of 3,000 to 3,500 gallons of 100 low lead aviation gasoline by the Hot Springs Airport, as required by South Dakota Codeified Law 5-18C-6. Purchase made with City Services Valcon at $4.67 per gallon. Other vendors considered were World Fuel Ascent Aviation Group at $4.94 per gallon, and Epic Fuel LLC at $4.97 per gallon.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business item G? Approve a plat of GT Lot 2 and GT Lot 3 and Block 5 of Stewart's second addition.
Make a motion to approve a plat of GT Lot 2 and GT Lot 3, Block 5 of Stewart's second addition to the town now city of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly an unnamed parcel, and that portion of railroad right-of-way between Block 50 and said unnamed project, I'm sorry, parcel.
Second.
Discussion. This one's not particularly on you, Don, but at least we've finally gotten to a point where we appreciate you waiting us out. This is some property adjacent to the Freedom Trail, just across from Brookside, that the adjacent owners want to add to, to their property. It was originally, we didn't know who owned it. We started this conversation with Garland to figure out all of that, and then our current attorneys helped us get us over the finish line on it. So this is just acknowledging that these two lots will now formally become someone else's property. Our main concern in it was making sure that we did not lose any part of the Freedom Trail. And we have been assured that that will not happen with this, the approval of this plat.
So this is essentially cleanup, because of, you know, it goes way back to when the original owner, whoever that was, bought it from the United States. And so it's, and it's kind of just been a forgotten parcel. So we're going to see this again in the future once this is all put together. The plat does not meet ordinance of the way it's divided now, so until it's replatted again, to make it conforming lots. So the people that have it now want to, once this is all cleared up, divide it a different direction and make three lots out of it that do conform to our ordinances. So it's just been a lot of muddy water that we're trying to clear. Does that pretty much explain it, Don? No?
No, Misty, P and Z. Yeah, this, this doesn't meet the ordinance. So we're jumping a little bit of faith there, I think. It's not large enough, but they're the original lots. And from what I understand, we've got to get this through the quiet title action.
Right.
So if these lots are transferred in between on this deal, they can't build on it. So I just want that on the record. But the idea is that they're going to make this into, they've got some additional land that they want to incorporate this into. In order to get through this, you've got to go through this.
To get to the next step.
The attorneys could figure it better than that, I'll tell you, maybe, but I'd probably come out about the same.
Don't go away. Stay close. Any other questions?
Wait a minute. Don, explain that again. My brain, my brain just cramped.
There's a, there's a front, minimum lot frontage you got to have on lot. We've got two lots in here.
Okay.
They don't need it. We've got a minimum lot size in the city of Hot Springs. One of them doesn't meet that. So this quiet title action, is that what we're dealing with?
Yes.
In order to get through that, they had to go back to the original plat to transfer it, and then they can move on from there.
Hey, guys. I'm Jason Ketch. I'm the property owner of property in discussion. Yes, we bought the property, Jason, to it. It's pretty large. It's about 2.8 acres. These two little parcels were between us and the city's property that the trails are. They were unrecorded. One was completely untitled. The other one was a railroad right-of-way. So we went through the quiet title action to get that resolved. As we, part of our, that quiet title process was a settlement agreement with the city, which we worked with the attorneys on. We agreed to pay for the plating of these properties. The city agreed to help us plat them, so that we could own them, get them recorded, and then incorporate them into the larger lot. We have shared with P and Z our plans for three lots that would be all conforming city ordinances for future residential lots. It is resolved residential, so that's, that's okay.
So what this does, then, it just cleans up the initial plots that are there right now that were unnamed and whatever, cleans this up a little better, so it can be replatted again, and then put into the actual lot size by ordinance.
Yep, yep. We'd be asking you guys to grandfather the existing lots. We're not plating them that way. That's the way they are.
So this is.
We just need them to be in our name.
Step one to get it fixed, to do it right.
Right.
Council can see this again.
Yeah.
So, so my, my question is, what, you mentioned lot size, Don. What is the acceptable lot size? If you're going to be splitting this whole parcel up into, what, three building sites?
The, the larger lot is, is larger. It's the Gedge tract, which you see on the side of that plat.
Right.
And so these two, we would kind of move the lot lines to get all of them within the city's requirements. I don't know, 10,000 square feet or something like that.
Depends on your use of the lot.
Okay.
But we have, we have worked with these guys to make sure that our future plan does conform with that.
So are you, are you plan on developing these into home sites? Is that what it is?
That's what we would plan to establish.
And what's the minimum width and length of a lot for a home site?
10,000 square feet.
Well, 6,000.
6,000, yes.
Depends if it's a duplex or a single family or a downtown.
For a single family, it's 50 feet, I believe. For a duplex, it's 75. We are planning them to be 90 feet wide, so it would work for either use.
90 feet wide?
Yep.
You agree, before any work or other transactions or sales take place, it will be re-platted into conforming lots.
Our, our plan is to be here next month to get these plated to the right size, once we actually control the property.
It might take longer than a month, because there's got to be a development plan, and then they have to go through the plating process, and we need to talk about that a little more.
We're, we're optimistic. It's been about two years of this getting quiet title, so we're patient.
Baby steps.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business item H? Approve a plat of Olsted Track North and Olsted Track South.
Make a motion to approve a plat of Olsted Track North and Olsted Track South, located in the southeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 24, T7S, R5E, BHM, Fall River County, South Dakota.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Olsted, can you educate us?
Well, this isn't in the city limits. You're, it's here because it touches the city limits.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So we make sure that it doesn't really line up anything in future that's going to cause a problem. This is a corner of a piece of land that I have on the side of Battle Mountain that's mostly worthless. But it joined my old house on Canton Avenue and my folks' house. And when this property came up for sale 15 years ago, I was deadly afraid of what was going to be in my backyard. So consequently, I bought it. Then I sold the house. And now, four years ago, I made a deal, verbal deal, with the people that now currently own the house, which is three buyers since I bought it, built it. And I want to transact it to them, so that they don't have somebody looking in their back window. I mean, it's literally like in their backyard. So I've just parceled off some stuff that I have no desire to maintain and to use. And this, like I said, the city's got it here today because it touches the city limits. And you guys, it's an important thing to make sure that when people are plating, is, this has never happened in Hot Springs before. We've always platted a little deal here and there, but it's really starting to grow, and people are doing more and more of this. The city's got to step up the game a little bit and be vigilant on how we move forward with approving these plats. And there's, there's some more coming in the meeting here, too.
Okay. So, so it's adjacent to city property. Does this have city utilities on it, like water and sewer?
Wouldn't have to, but it does. It paid.
Well, it's already there.
Yeah, it paid a sewer assessment, which is kind of odd. It paid a sewer assessment from the previous owner.
Okay.
Sewer district was put up in there in the 70s, and it's, it's all outside the city limits.
That's odd.
Well, it's unusual, but it was done at the time, because he requested service.
Yeah. I was going to say, is it going to be annexed?
Well, if you want to annex a non-conforming use, that causes you some headaches, have at it.
Wow.
But it's, it's, there aren't any, any street lines or utility lines or anything that are compromised in this. I'd be, you know, it's self-serving. I, of course, I abstained on this. And, but, yeah, I just want to get it transferred to the neighbors, than the people that actually live in town. It's just right, the line is their backyard.
Anyone else? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion on new business item I? Approve a plat of McIntosh Tract of Back Nine Addition to Hot Springs.
I make a motion to approve a plat of McIntosh Tract of Back Nine Addition to Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly Track 4B revised, and Track B of Lot B9 through 23.
Second.
Discussion.
So this essentially, this is on Bison Pass Road, which is up, where you turn onto it, just past the country club. And there's a duplex on it. Is that a duplex? There's a house on it, but they just want that center line taken out.
It's one of the townhouses. Originally, it was built along the 18th Fairway. This isn't problematic for the city, because what they're doing is combining two lots.
Right.
It's the neighboring lot that they're putting onto their plat. So we're not looking at a division that we have to worry about access or utilities to. These are pretty simple. It's a, making two lots into one.
It's getting rid of this interior line.
Right.
And there are no special assessments on either the lots, because we do have some still in the older parts area. That would be an issue, but on this one, there aren't.
Yeah, and I believe in order for them to file a plat, all that's got to be brought current. The tax is all paid anyway.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On to new business item J. Can I get a motion to approve a plat of Bent Pine Tract?
I make a motion to approve the Bent Pine Tract, located in the north half, northwest quarter, southwest quarter of Section 13, T7S, R5E, BHM, Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly Track R7 and Track R10.
Second. Discussion.
So this is located kind of to the right of where Dale's Restaurant used to be, and where those big tanks used to be. And they've taken all that out and flattened it out. And Shag's Classic Car Garage is on the right side of this. And this plat makes it again larger, taking that interior line out, where the little L piece on the top left will be added. So again, it's making the parcel larger, not, not making it smaller. And it's adding it to the Shag's Classified Car Lot. Let's see if I have anything else. Yeah.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item K. Can I get a motion to approve a plat of Lot S-27R of New business item K, can I get a motion to approve a plat of lot S-27R of Boulder Falls Business Park?
Make a motion to approve a plat of lot S-27R of Boulder Falls Business Park, City of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly lot S-26R and lot S-27.
Second. Discussion?
So, this is down there on the corner on Mockingbird Drive off of Boulder Falls, and around by the new, across the road from the RV, the new RV park. And I believe Maverick wants to put their new Maverick Tire, Auto and Tire wants to put their new building there since their building has been sold. And so, they want the interior lines, again, taken out of this. And it was delayed because we had to search for a sewer line that went further north on the next line.
Yeah, when this was originally in front of you folks, I forget what language I use, but I asked for it to be removed or moved to another meeting because of the statement in here that the utility easement on the lot line common to former lot, it's real small print, but former lot S-26R and lot S-27. And the concern was, if there was in fact a utility on that lot line, and not just an easement for a utility on the lot line, but if there was a utility buried on that lot line, then we couldn't remove that easement. So, it took some time to confirm that not only was there not a utility on that line, the utility wasn't even in the lots that are being considered in this particular motion. It was well north of that. So, we've been assured now that that easement, there are no utilities there, so it's not an issue that I was concerned it was initially.
Yeah, Bob's right. We, on the Boulder Falls stuff that you see, and any of the new stuff that's coming through, you won't see any alleys in these residential, in these commercial areas. So typically, all the utilities have been in the streets and the alleys. But all of the lot lines in the Boulder Falls area have, each lot has an eight-foot easement for utility off of all the lot lines, interior lot lines. So, it creates a 16-foot easement along between the properties for utilities. So, when people come in and ask to vacate because they're not allowed to build a building over an existing lot line, even though they own both of them, so they remove the lot line. But you have to be very clear if you're going to remove the easement also, because just removing the lot line doesn't always dictate that the easement's going to be moved. Anderson's done a good job with this one, and we're all learning about this, and they are too. So, they've made notes in there about that easement's going away, and that the other easements are remaining intact. But there's more and more information that comes out on these plats, hopefully in the future, that we won't be looking back for resolutions or motions or whatever 10 years from now trying to figure out what happened. It'll be recorded on the plat.
Don, this may be beyond the scope of this motion, but what's the zoning of this area?
I think it's highway service, Bill.
So, that, that would fit what the current Maverick is, 71 is highway service also?
Yeah, I think everything, even in the interior down there, both sides, is all highway service. Don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure it is. Not looking for that.
I just...
It doesn't change till residential till we get further west, and then we get into the Boulder Falls residential area.
Okay, so, again, this, beyond the discussion of this plat, but whether or not planning and zoning needs to take a look at the activities he plans to do there, and whether or not the car, the number of cars that are typically stored at that facility violate what's allowed in highway services.
You have an ordinance enforcement guy going around and a guy writing letters, so that's, that's a very major concern when you get a large piece of property like this and that kind of business, and pretty soon, it becomes a salvage yard.
Yeah.
And that, and the ordinance has addressed that, so.
Yeah, the ordinance...
I think you have the tools, you just have to stand up and do it.
Okay. Thanks, Don. Thanks, Don. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On the new business item L, can I get a motion for a travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton?
Make a motion to approve a travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton to attend the BHAFOA quarterly meeting in Custer on 9/26/24.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And on to our last new business item M, the one that was added, and that's a motion for a travel request for Officer Ken Ayers.
Make a motion to approve a travel training request for Ken Ayers to retrieve the newly purchased police vehicle from the Kansas State Patrol, dates to be determined 9/6 through 9/8, 2024.
Second. So, counsel will acknowledge that depending on the discussion you have, this motion may be amended, necessarily amended, depending which option you choose. I handed out a travel training request prepared by Chief Norton. Chief, you still with us? He outweighed us?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And this has to do with the vehicle that you approved in the bills for purchase that was discussed during the budget meeting, and the different options as far as getting that vehicle to Hot Springs. Chief Norton, if you would take it from there?
I don't, I guess I don't know. Is it just my travel training request that I have?
It's the one that you gave me.
Four different options.
So, actually, let's, let me ask this question. Counsel, have you had a chance to take a look at it, or do you need a few minutes to review it? Or do you want Chief Norton to walk you through it?
I've read it.
Okay.
I'm good.
So, I just had a question. One of the options, you have two different flight options. Is this, the flight options, are they for one person?
Yep.
Or, okay, because I was just wondering if it's one or two people?
So, that's where the discussion came with the mayor and myself, is trying to determine if we need to send the mechanic down there to look at it, or if we're comfortable sending an officer to go down and look at it, because the vehicle does still have another 50,000 miles of warranty on it. So, as far as I'm concerned, anything that's mechanically wrong with it is still covered under warranty. So, do we need to send two people down there to look at a vehicle that still has, you know, a powertrain and engine warranty on it? Kansas Highway Patrol bought an extended warranty, up to five years, 100,000 miles on that car, and it's got 49,000 miles on it. So, I guess I just want to leave it up to you guys. I know we got burned the last time we did this, so I want to let you guys make that decision on how you want us to obtain it.
So, is, that's a powertrain warranty and not a...
Correct. It's not bumper to bumper, it's just...
All right.
Yeah. And I've got the service records and everything from that vehicle from the Highway Patrol, as well as the warranty information. They sent me all that stuff. I do have an email in to Larry Lewis, who's the fleet manager. He was out for the holiday weekend. I assume he's back tomorrow. That's what his, his automatic response told me. I was trying to inquire about seeing if he could FaceTime us or, you know, give us a walk-around of the vehicle to ensure it's cosmetic overview, I guess, but I've got multiple photographs of it. It looks good. It's got, you know, nice lights, and it's clean, and appears to be a nice vehicle, but like I said, I wanted to give you guys the options of how you want to do it. On the, on the shipping notation there on that travel request form, the reason it's, I can't remember if it's 850 to 1,200, what I have written there?
895.
So, it was 895, and then when I refreshed it, it was, it was 1,000, and then when I refreshed it again, it was, you know, 1,000, 1,050. So, I don't know if that's just based on the fuse of how, how soon you want it, if the, if the rate goes up. So, I want to leave kind of a variable rate there, because I don't want there to be any surprises if it ends up costing more than the $895.
So, the shipping would be nobody going down and seeing it and bringing it back?
Correct. But I, oh, sorry. I was going to say, I, before I would recommend that, I would at least have Larry get in touch with us and have a, you know, either FaceTime or some sort of review of the vehicle prior to committing to having a third party go pick it up and bring it to us.
My question was going to be around the total estimated cost of travel to include mileage, lodging, registration fees. Do you're flying via Shadrin Denver, Kansas City, flying via Rapid, Kansas City, does that include mileage to the airport and back? Does it include motel, one-night stay, and other reasons, or just the flight cost?
All those trips have meals, hotel, everything built into them. I mean...
Your estimate?
Yeah. Very rough estimates, but I would, I would advocate if we're going to send somebody to do it, because Ken's going to be the one who goes because he's on light duty. We're not going to miss him, you know, for a couple of days to go down there, as opposed to myself or another officer doing it. So, I prefer to have Ken go do it. He lives in Rapid, so he could, the logistics of getting him to Shadrin, to Boutique Air, to Denver, it's just a layovers, everything like that.
Denver.
Yeah, Southwest Air, whatever it's called. I would prefer if we're going to do that, to just have him fly right out of Rapid into Kansas City. The fleet manager will pick us up, pick him up there, take him to Topeka, to the vehicle, and...
I don't know if many of the councilmen knew that Ken Ayers, an officer, is on light duty, so to send him as opposed to taking an officer out of the rotation of being on call.
Correct. Yeah.
Well, it only makes sense to fly him out of Rapid City if he lives in Rapid City. Doesn't make any sense to bring him down to Shadrin, and it just...
Heeds up that 200.
Yeah, the money you're going to spend there, it's just easy for him to...
Difference in flights, so.
Well, if he goes three different towns, and then he drives back, he's going to be really tired. That's something to think about, too.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's 10 hours, it's a 10-hour drive, so I asked him if he wanted to do it, and he was more than willing to, to go make the trip for us, so.
Are you going to help us drive it?
I don't want, ah, no. Down and back, you mean? Yeah, I don't think he wants to do that.
And your, your budget looks good for this train, uh, travel?
I mean, is that what that come out of our travel trading budget, then? Yeah, I think there's plenty in there.
Okay.
I'll be honest, I don't know off the top of my head what's in there, but I think there's a decent amount still, yeah.
Does Ken feel comfortable looking at the vehicle without a mechanic there?
Yeah, he does. You know, he's been a cop for 20 years, so...
Does he know anything about mechanics?
Yeah, he's pretty confident in what we need it to be as far as a police vehicle, and, you know, he'll test drive. He asked me, well, if it's, well, if it's a pile, I said, well, pay to fly you home, you know? So, he's, he's in, you know, he's ready to go down there and take a look at it, and if he, if he thinks it's worthwhile, I trust his judgment.
Ken, is that warranty?
Yeah, and because it's under warranty, you know, like that last one we bought in Florida, that was as-is, no warranty, no nothing. So, when he got up here and it wasn't up to snuff, we were just, you know, out of luck. At least with this one, if there's anything mechanically wrong with it, we send it to MOPAR and they fix it.
So, I want to go back to your question, JR, as far as the chief's budget. My recollection of the conversations we had during the budget meeting was that counsel would approve 35,000 plus some odd change for the purchase of the vehicle.
Up to 40,000.
40,000.
Right. 35 for the vehicle, recognizing these other expenses were there to go down and get it. So, a total of 40,000 for the vehicle. So, counsel's approved 35 for the purchase of the vehicle. So, as far as the budget, if you don't approve it tonight, it's not in his budget, but if you approve up to 40,000, then it's in the budget.
You did approve 40 for purchasing the vehicle.
Correct. That was a test, that's all it was.
Well, no, it's not a test, because my recollection of what they approved was 35,000 for the purchase of the vehicle.
Oh, it was up to 40,000 in the motion, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because that...
Yeah, all right.
That was brought up in the conversation.
That was going to have minimal...
That was more than a half hour ago, so I'll defer to better memories than mine. I was focused on the amount in the bills, so, okay.
And to answer the question, through August, the police department has consumed 47.04% of their training budget, so the balance is 65, 67,07.
Chief, what's the drawback of having it shipped?
Just honestly not getting eyes on it in person.
So, we still have a chance to say no?
If they ship it up here, you mean? You mean if they ship it up here?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we're leaving an opening to reject the vehicle. That's why we want to lay eyes on it. If that's not the case, then why wouldn't we just have it shipped and save all the time and travel and all that?
Because I guess we have to ship it back.
And plus, they're, they're responsible for making sure that it gets here safely.
The freight company would be, like, the KHP doesn't have anything to do with the shipping and everything, so if we pay a grand to have it get, you know, have it shipped up here, and we hate it, we got to pay them another thousand to ship it back.
Would they ship it back?
I don't know. I really don't.
So, I was going to say...
That's a good question, honestly.
So, we still have an opening to reject it, then? That's, that's what it sounds like I'm hearing.
If they go down...
If we go down?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
My, my anticipation would be that, you know, the check would get cut this week, and we would send it down with Ken. He'd go look at it, and if he's not comfortable with it, he calls, and, you know, my anticipation is that we would call Adam, and, you know, if he had any questions or any glaring issues that he'd want us to check out, he says, ah, you know, Ken's not comfortable or Adam's not comfortable, we can fly him home and not buy it.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm of the opinion that we ought to have, get some good photographs if we don't already have them. Have someone, we can hire an independent mechanic down there, take a look at it if we need to, and have shipped. Not only that, I'm already having buyers in more spot this vehicle. It's just a field, based upon nothing. It's just a field.
All right, so I want to go back to a reference to $40,000. Well, I don't, where's the reference to 40,000 in the conversation we're having tonight?
Well, it was 35 for the vehicle, and the other 5,000 was for all the incidentals.
Right, but somebody said the motion already, the 40,000 was already approved.
Yeah, you did that at the last meeting.
Okay, at the last meeting, not tonight's meeting.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate you indulging me. Okay. All right, so the motion then is to have Officer Ayers go pick the vehicle up. Want to go back to what the chief had mentioned as far as the mechanic not going down, the conversation the chief and I had, that was based around the fact that there still is that warranty, because there was, because of the passed vehicle, there was concern that we got bit on that one, are we going to get bit on this? So, the motion is to have Officer Ayers go pick it up. Sounds like one counsel member, Gary, is of the opinion it should be shipped, so then that would be up to the person who made the motion, whether they want to amend it, or they want to go with the original motion.
I guess I just, if I could add, the fact that we've got the light-duty officer, that's a very experienced officer, carrying the check to get, again, considering our previous experience, even though I do believe Kansas Highway Patrol is probably a better, more reputable firm than we dealt with in the past, to be able to put eyes on it, go through a, essentially, a service check of all the cop stuff, do a normal person look at the mechanical stuff, run it around the block, find out if there's air passing through the Does it run? Do the wheels go round and round? And if none of that stuff works, he keeps the check and makes the call. If we go, if we have it shipped, we get into a very, it feels like we get into a very muddy situation of, uh, we don't like it, give us our money back, which I don't, maybe, maybe not. So, I don't know, I just, and again, where we, we, it doesn't cost us overtime, it doesn't cost us an officer on the street, it gives him some productive work.
Well, my thoughts were that we hire an independent mechanic down there and put a lemon on him, you know, like maybe 300, $350 to take a look at it and tell us, report to us what his findings are, if we were to have it shipped.
I guess, oh, sorry. I guess my thoughts are, if we got boots on the ground down there and they eyeball it and look at the situation, we know firsthand what's going down.
I think...
I think he can look at it before it leaves the KHP lot. He can have a look at it. I'm not even getting in it and drive it, or yeah, it looks good, he's checked it all out, he gets in it, does a little test drive with it, look, see if it has the proper setup for police gear that you need. Um, I go from there.
He has to drive it ten hours, so.
All right.
Did you say, excuse me, I'm sorry. Did you say earlier that you were going to get the service records for the vehicle?
Yep, we've got them.
Okay.
Yep, we got all the maintenance records, we have the warranty information. So.
Yep, send him on the plane.
Send him down.
Yep.
Yep.
He's a Marine, he can make it back.
We have FaceTime now, he can FaceTime Adam.
Yep, that's kind of my thought. We get him there and Adam can ask the hundred questions that he has or whatever, and Ken's not going to hide anything from it, you know, like maybe somebody in Florida did with that Charger, you know, they're not going to show you this crinkle or that thing. Ken will show him everything that he wants to see, and hopefully that'll be enough for him to sign off on.
All right. Uh, JR, are you open to changing your motion?
I can add to it, um, with the amount, is this what we're talking?
No, it, um, the, the motion is to, to have Officer Ayers go down and, and pick the vehicle up.
Correct.
Okay, so that motion stands?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, um, any other questions? Ms. Tuchko, the role, please?
JR Boston?
Yes.
Bill Lucas?
Yes.
Travis Lorback?
Yes.
Gary Tellcam?
Yes.
Linda Barbell?
Yes.
Paul Blando?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes. All right, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
So that brings us to our committee reports and, and else, uh, we're already at eight fifty-two. Uh, we have an executive session that may take a while, uh, unless there's a, uh, driving need for anybody to give their reports tonight, I'd like to defer those to the next council meeting.
If there's, there's any reports that include an action item that's going to be on the next council meeting, if we could share those, so we're not delaying it another meeting, that'd be great, before we skip. If anybody's committee reports include something that's going to be on the next council meeting, please be sure to share.
We'll give you a few minutes to look at your reports.
Well, I didn't get official minutes from the P and Z. We've pretty much covered everything tonight except for, um, there was discussion on advanced divide, design and the zoning changing and annexation of the housing development, um, next to the ambulance shed, that was discussed, um, with, you know, it's up to the city to be doing that. And, um, I think we're being assisted with the designers from Rapid City on that process. And then, um, there's a couple other plats that, um, weren't in this one that will be coming forward after there's been some engineering requirements obtained.
You got somebody with their hand up back there.
Did you have something?
One of those plats I think, that I'm talking about, sweat.
Sweat, yes.
Yeah.
That wasn't on this agenda?
Didn't make it to the agenda, it looks like. Anderson told me to come down because they thought it was coming before tonight, so.
It's not on the agenda.
Um, there was something with the sweat lot division, which?
They're all my plots.
Where was that, where's that located? I can't.
It's in Evans Heights, uh, Doran Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, you want to subdivide, um, and there was something to the effect of we would approve it after water and sewer to the lot lines, and, um, curb stops are required at each lot. That was the discussion.
They, they are at each lot already. Yeah.
So that should be coming forward, because it wasn't on tonight?
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
All right.
Yeah, I have three curb stops and three sewer mains, I have it all. The, the bank will deal with me until I don't have two houses on one parcel. That's the only reason I'm doing this. It's still all mine. I just need it not to be on one parcel, because the bank can't, Fannie Mae, Bernie Mac, whatever the rules are, they can't do anything with me until I have one house, and that cabin is its own house, so there's two, actually. So it's just my stuff.
So it'll be repleded for the three lots?
Yeah, that's how Anderson drew it a month ago, but I understand this stuff takes time. I just.
Don, we need to continue that conversation, because I'm puzzled now, and I, I don't want to extend the meeting now, because we're, we're beyond when we can do anything about it, uh, but I, I need to discuss with you again, I, I had an understanding of why it was not on tonight's meeting, and now it seems that there's confusion of why it wasn't on tonight's meeting, so we need to have that discussion.
Well, and Misty's talking about subdividing fees and stuff haven't been done yet.
Yeah. We didn't even, um, that's something that's been closely sat down with Don after the.
It's got to be a planned development starts through before you get to the plating, make sure that the utilities are all in place according to ordinance. Then they may or may not be there, but the city doesn't know that.
Okay.
I mean, that part, verify that they were on those lots, didn't take place before, came before, so there's a learning curve there taking place, guys.
Okay. All right.
If they sell, if they sell, if they, if you prove the plat of that, and he sells one of those lots off, and the watered sewer isn't to the lot line, you'd probably be paying for it.
I don't want us to, but.
All right. Okay, so the, the committee member, committee chair, said that they don't have anything that, uh, they would expect to be on the next council's, uh, agenda, so they're good with foregoing, uh, the reports. Uh, do you want to give your report?
You're welcome to read it. I need to read it to you.
I read it.
It was written.
It's ugly.
Remember, since there's lots in there, you need to look at the numbers. We're almost two million dollars in losses year to date.
So let me, let me offer this then. Uh, if, if you're more comfortable, uh, reading the, the report, certainly would, uh, want to give you time to do that, but I'm going to need a five-minute pause before we get into your meeting, or to your report.
I need to read it. Let's just take a pause. If anybody has any questions, just write them out. Pretty clear, please ask questions, share my concerns.
All right, so then that brings us to a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, we go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law, one dash twenty-five dash two, one personnel.
Second, discussion?
Chairs.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passes, so Misty, if you could join us, uh, our attorney, enjoy the rest of your evening. Uh, you don't need to be a part of that. There won't be any action taken after the meeting, um, and I make no promises how long the meeting will be.